Community Motors West Side, the GM Superstore next to Cinema West. Community Motors of Mason City, we give you more.
All right, it's 7:00. This is a very good meeting of the Mason City City Council on November 15, 2011. Before we call the meeting to order, I just want to take a quick minute to talk about our impending push here towards Blue Zones. As a lot of people know, Mason City, your city council here voted unanimously to make a push with the governor to become not just the healthiest state, but for us, one of the healthiest cities here in Iowa, and become a Blue Zone city. There's a lot to be said about that, including our own wellness, our own economic well-being. And part of getting to that level is Mr. Dan Beedner, who was created the Blue Zones and the project that is ahead of us, is the nine steps, the nine big categories. And you'll hear more about this as we move forward, but let me just kind of give it to you. One is to move naturally, and that can be accomplished by a lot of these bike lanes, trails, etc. in your community. Know your purpose, be one with yourself. Number three, downshift, just kind of relax, which is always a good thing. Number four, 80% rule. We have a lot of restaurants and organizations onboard, which is 80% rule is, you know, eat a smaller meal. Hopefully, we'll be able to position where we'll have smaller meals available at restaurants. Five is plant slant, and same with that, you know, be able to have a chance to eat things with more fiber, vegetarian meals, have them available. Six, wine and five. Seven, family first, keeping your family, your nuclear family close. Eight is a sense of belonging. And nine, just making sure that you find the right tribe. And how these combine, well, that will be something that would happen as we move forward. Mason City should be really proud of itself. In the last month, since your city council voted unanimously to make a push on this, we've partnered up with Mercy, Hy-Vee, Principal, some of our largest employers in town, and we have moved from literally the bottom of Iowa, and now we are in the top 25, which is absolutely spectacular. And I think everybody should give Mason City a hand for... Now, we still have some work to do. We need to get up as high as we can. Charles City is actually four in front of us. They're significantly smaller in population, but they're still in front of us. And of course, it's front of the competition, but we'd like to be in front of them. And of course, Cedar Falls is actually moving up the list fast behind us, and we'd like to make sure that we stay in front of them. So how do we do it? How do we make this push, and what's the date? The date is November 23rd. That's the big date that we need to get to figure out whether we are going to have an opportunity, folks, to fill out a full application. And to do that, you'll see up here on your screen, and hopefully you'll see this at home, and hopefully our media sources will report it. What you need to do is go to www.bluzonesproject.com. And if I remember correctly, there's a green box on there. I signed up about a month ago. This green box only takes about 30, 40 seconds. And register your commitment to help us become a Blue Zone committee or a community. Or text BZP to 772937, and I understand standard rates apply. But I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the young folks in our community to show off Mason City's social networking skills and get them shooting this around. Empty your address books, kids, to your folks, to your grandparents, show them how to do it, so we can make Mason City a Blue Zone community. I would also add real quickly that there is a significant commitment by the city of Mason City to this, and this is one of the things that Mr. Beedner and Blue Zone Project want to see. Mr. Trout has recently put in place a Blue Zone Project Coordinator. That will be Angie Keederman. She is the volunteer coordinator, wonderful volunteer coordinator, that took over for Mary Zischka, and she'll be the liaison to help coordinate as we move forward. And we also have two very solid grant writers within our organization. Beth Enright and Mary Schissel will have an opportunity to help with this. And hopefully, we'll be able to partner with everybody, all the organizations and people in this community can get this done themselves. Thank you for that. So we'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. And do we have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda?
A vote.
Is there a second?
Sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have a few items of special business to do tonight, some special items at that. The first item of business, our city lost a beloved employee, someone who had served for years in Mason City and gave it all just recently. And I'd like Karen McReevey to come up here. Karen McReevey is the spouse of the late Chuck McReevey. I have the following certificate. City of Mason City, Certificate of Appreciation. Charles "Chuck" McReevey worked for the city of Mason City for over 40 years. Chuck's dedication to the community through this long appointment is exemplified by his personal efforts to assist each and every citizen or business he dealt with. His time and effort to make the community safer through the continual updating and building codes and enforcement while having lasting impact on the future. The community has lost a faithful public servant and truly appreciates and thanks him for all his contributions to the city of Mason City. And we thank you, Mr. Dan, as well. Please give a round of applause. All right. Item number two, we have some certificates of recognition for our Mason City police and firefighters who received Sullivan awards. We have certificates for everyone here. Based on the incident over at Birch Drive, these officers, these men and women, performed absolutely exemplary acts of valor to save some lives, and they've been awarded with the Sullivan Brothers Award. Our certificate goes as follows. City of Mason City, Officer of the Mayor, Certificate of Recognition. On behalf of the city council, this certificate is awarded to these officers. The recognition of receiving the Sullivan Brothers Award of Valor and for your outstanding contributions and service to the citizens of Mason City, Iowa. And we'll call each one of you up one at a time. Please just come to me first, and we'll give you our certificate. And while you shake the chief's hand, Mr. Nelson will come down to the table. Our first one goes to Aaron Beamer. Please give him a round of applause. Peter Bieber, please come forward. David Ward, please come forward. Charlie Connor. Wayne Seepkin. Ed Waldorf. And a last one, we want to note before I call our name. Officer Krieger, also received the Officer of the Year designation from the Iowa Association of Women's Police Officers in conjunction with her actions along with these other officers on October 27, 2010. Officer Krieger. Thank you very much, officers. You are absolutely the finest of Mason City, and we very much appreciate your service. Time to leave. Number three. We have proclamation for National Hospice and Paladin Care Month. From hospice to North Iowa, we have Bob Weiss here. And from Iowa Hospice, we have Abby Burmester. If you please could come forward. It reads as follows. National Hospice and Paladin Care Month, number 2011. Hospice and Paladin Care, we listen and we care. Officer of the Mayor, Mason City, Mason City, Sarah Lurk County, Iowa. Whereas hospice and Paladin care offer the highest quality services and support to patients and family caregivers facing serious and life-limiting illness. Whereas hospice care and Paladin care providers take the time to ask what's important to those they are caring for and listen to what their parents and families say. Whereas skilled and compassionate hospice and Paladin care professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clergy, provide comprehensive care focused on the wishes of each individual patient. Whereas through pain management, symptom control, caregiver training, and assistance in emotional, spiritual support, our patients to live fully up until the final moment, surrounded and supported by faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas the provision of quality hospice and Paladin care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health, or social status, and in every stage of human life serves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. Whereas every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. Whereas more than 468,000 trained volunteers contribute 22 million hours of service to hospice programs annually. Whereas hospice and Paladin care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes and family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore, be resolved in Iera Cookmire. Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me, Mason City, Iowa, Sarah Lurk County, do hereby acclaim, November 2011 is National Hospice and Paladin Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care to end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Congratulations. All right, number four is a presentation and quarterly update by our partner, Visit Mason City. And we have here tonight their director, Sue Armour.
Thank you, and thank you for giving the opportunity to give you an update. My name is Sue Armour, and I am the director for Visit Mason City. Our mission is to attract, retain, and also to expand visitor spending here in the community and also in the area. Through our mission, we are able to generate visitor spending, which then supports area businesses that contribute to the tax base, and also generates local ops and sales tax, and also lodging tax, which then is cycled into the economy helping the tax base. A definition of a tourist, just to kind of give you a point of reference, are those that live outside in 90 mile radius of the community, so those do not live here in the North Iowa area. And I just wanted to give you an update on some of the projects that we've been working on. First and foremost, we have some marketing grants in our office. For the past 15 years, Visit Mason City, we have assisted nearly 200 marketing projects through the Tourism Marketing Grant Program in the office. The first round of applications was received, and seven projects were awarded financial assistance. And these projects are estimated to attract 20-some thousand visitors to the community. And the next round of applications will be received in February of 2012. So if you're interested in learning more about that program, you can come to connect with our office or look online for that information. In addition to offering sports grants, I'm sorry, in addition to offering a grant program, we also progressively apply for grants that further enhance our mission. And so, serving as a lead project manager for the North Iowa Sports Authority Committee, we recently were awarded, or the committee was recently awarded, a $50,000 sports grant. And these funds will be used to attract some new events to town, including an archery event to the community to replace one that has left. We're also looking at expanding six existing events, including a snowmobile event that will be held in the Clear Lake area, two barrel horse shows, a hundred jumper horse show, a softball tournament, and also a bike race. Each of them will bring a significant number of visitors to the community. And back in June, I shared with you that Visit Mason City partnered with Right on the Park and completed a large media blitz. And the goal was to attract media attention and also to provide accessible support services, including photos and media releases and more with all the new projects that were coming online this summer. And I'm pleased to report that that had a great return on investment. So far, we have been able to follow 80 media outlets that have featured Mason City in various locations. Many are state and regional in nature, but a significant number of those were national and international. And those include USA Today, Collective Travel Radio, a Belgium magazine called Decor, as we work with the travel writer from Belgium, CNN coverage, NBC Today Show coverage, and more. If we were to purchase this coverage, we would be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of investments. These things were provided, and we had all of these items ready to go and accessible for the travel and media writers that were working on those. Consistent with communication, we also work very diligently in social media, knowing that that is a huge component in marketing and promoting the area. And we work with our partners in a team approach in doing so, and our partners communicated need for some education in the area, so recently we hosted a social media workshop. And also, our partners communicated interest in doing some marketing, but they wanted to do it at a lower-cost, affordable level. So again, seeing a need and filling that need. Visit Mason City and the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce are partnering to offer a tourism co-op advertising program for 2012, and we're inviting all of our partners to partake in that. So that's another new thing that we're working on. Also too, the Board of Directors has been diligently working on an organizational change. All legal items are in place, and we are within days of signing a lease and announcing that location, so that will be coming here within the next few days. The location that has been selected will house a visitor information center and also the Visit Mason City offices. And I just kind of wanted to real briefly go through some of the things that the board did to determine the site, and also to talk about the services and programs that will be provided and the research methods that were included in deciding these things. The board researched over 50 potential locations with great emphasis on affordability and high visibility. We interviewed multiple organizations regarding programs and opportunities that had a great return on investment, again, focusing on increasing and attracting visitor spending. We looked at traffic counts and signage opportunities. We looked at our existing target markets and growth opportunities for markets that we know that we can expand upon. So when we look at all of those things, the board is in the process of executing a plan that is very progressive and visionary. It's designed to incorporate not only the needs of today, but the needs of in the future and tomorrow. With the emerging technology, the board and actually a committee that was an ad hoc committee was formed and researched if a visitor information center is even in this social marketing tool anymore. As we all know, using the internet, social media, smartphones, and GPSs, is an information center even valuable and will it drive and increase visitor spending? And we are pleased to note that our information that we collected, that there is no substitute to face-to-face conversations and interaction. So the information points to the value of how personal interaction can best narrow options for travelers when they're seeking information, how it can best help the needs and exceed the expectations of a visitor, how we can upsell and cross-sell, again, wanting to do and grow and expand and retain tourism. So in summary, the present and the future is about technology, and we are fully engaged in that technology, having a mobile website and other useful resources, but it's also about high touch. And the hospitality and the experience of high touch motivates travelers to stay longer, so 30% end up staying longer, leaving more visitor spending behind. They also return to the destination multiple repeat visits, and again, that's what we're looking at doing, retaining and expanding. And they also have great testimonials and share their experiences because they've had such a great experience that you have strong testimonials of social media following you. So even though that the industry is changing rapidly, face-to-face interaction is going to play a critical role in the decisions that we're making. So that's kind of some of the criteria that we looked at when we looked at finding a site and a location, and more will become available when we announce that site.
Thank you very much, Director. We appreciate the report. We'll do one quick round here if council would like to do it. Council have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks again for your partnership.
Number five, we have a presentation by Executive Director of Main Street, Mason City, Mark Byrd-Walsh.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This is Mason City, Main Street, Mason City, the Mason City Downtown Association. Our mission is to preserve, promote, and enhance downtown Mason City as an entertainment, cultural, business, and residential destination for the benefit of the entire community. We're going to talk tonight mostly about some of the information from our monthly reports from August, September, and October, as well as a brief update of kind of what's happened since October 31st. During those three months, we had $466,700 in private investment in 10 different projects completed downtown, as well as an additional $82,000 in state money that went in from these private projects. And of course, on top of that, $13 million completed projects in public improvement from streetscape and library, long-term projects came to head. Also, about $800,000 in private projects that are completed or about to be complete on top of those. From that, we gained two new businesses and had two relocated businesses from outside of the downtown area into downtown. Unfortunately, also, two businesses did close, both closed there. But there resulted in 14, a net 14 new full-time equivalent jobs for Mason City, 21 new jobs for downtown. And we also had 728 volunteer hours going to downtown, which at the value of the state of Iowa, uses just over $12,000 that people donated to the benefit of the city of Mason City. Those businesses that are already existing downtown have been commenting on since the market opened, great increase in business. A lot of businesses have caught up to or nearly caught up to where they would have expected to be without any of the difficulties involving the streetscape, which were expected. Some are far beyond their growth projections from any of that. Organizationally, we've done a lot in the last three months. We've attended multiple conferences, both myself as a staff member and also our volunteers. Those have ranged from orientation for our volunteers, put on by the state, historic tax credit workshops, nonprofit workshops, non-economic outlook luncheon, generally just ways that we go out and gather information that we can help serve the community with and rein back to Mason City. We hosted two major events, Friday Night Live in August and the Great University Festival. The Friday Night Live in August brought about 600 people downtown and was a significant fundraiser and also a significant driver of business for downtown tenants. The Great University Festival was a two-day event. The weather was not as kind as that weekend, but did draw about 600 people for the John Dillinger bank robbery reenactment, and I, from conversation with business owners, it was a very positive event. Also included an art crawl, which was a first fry, and also went over very well for most who I heard had some first-timer difficulties, but definitely a growth opportunity for us there. We are in the middle of our fundraising campaign. Funds are very important to us. We do try and seek opportunities for funding outside of the city of Mason City. Right now, we have about $14,000, $20,000 raised from 60 donors, which is already significantly beyond our goal from last year. I just thought that shows significant community buy-in to what we're doing here. Though it is still very important to be getting funding from the city and other, as many sources as possible. We do reach out and try and find ways that we can cut our costs to maximize the use of every dollar that we have. And in that vein, to most efficiently use our space, we will be relocating at the end of this year, early next year, into the North Iowa Commerce Center along with the North Iowa Quarter Economic Development Commission, the Mason City Builders Exchange, and the Mason City Chamber of Commerce, which will allow us to access lots of new venues for information as well as, as I said, use the money that we do get from our supporters as efficiently as possible. Also during this time, we've worked with approximately 10 businesses that I would say have roughly a 50% chance or better of occurring within the next six months. Beyond that, there's probably 10 to 15 businesses that very well could come true, but I'm not guaranteeing anything. With those businesses, we use tools from the city, from the state, from our private partners, our public entity partners, to bring as much information to help them see why Mason City is the place for them. And using those partnerships has been a very efficient means of developing new businesses. I really think that's why we're seeing new business, and we'll continue to see businesses move downtown. We also have been working on our SOA program. For those of you who do not know, we received a $500,000 community development block grant from the federal government through the State of Iowa Economic Development Agency that's going to help us take some of our private space with managing buy-in from our business property owners to match our beautiful public space that we have there in the streetscape. So we really have a lot of things going on, a lot of long-term projects that we're excited to see moving along positively. And we really cannot stress how much we thank the city council for all the support for downtown, and also the citizens and business owners of Mason City for the patience in this long road to where we get where we are now and where we're going in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate the report, and I appreciate your partnership and all the work that you guys have been doing. It's been a really strong board. Council, does anybody on the council want to have any questions for the Director? Thank you very much, Director. We appreciate it. Well, number six is a presentation regarding the hip hop feasibility study. And we have here tonight Director Byron, who's going to take a series study.
The city of Mason City has a unique opportunity in saving this historic egg law house. We purchased this property as part of 2008 flood buyout, long-term buyout from Dale and Armstrong. We, with FEMA's assistance, have been involved in a feasibility study to look at whether this building could be moved, and if so, what's its best use and potential relocation options. Mike Kenter, who's the principal of this consulting group and team that is working with us, is here tonight with the team, and they have an update report for you.
Thank you, Pam. I'm Mike Kenter. I own a construction consulting firm in Des Moines. And our feasibility study team here included myself, architect, architectural historian, engineer, two house movers, and a local Realtor. So due to time, we have a good PowerPoint, but I'm going to let Ed Mon with Genesis Architecture run you through that because he's in charge of putting together our PowerPoints.
Good evening. Our goal this evening here is to, one, to give you an update on where we are in the feasibility study, but then, second of all, to ask for community input on ideas that want to do with the facility. So let's jump in here. First off, brief history and background about the house. It's currently sitting at 655 Northeast 7th Street. The house was built in 1939 by Dr. Williams and... The house was built in 1939 by Dr. William and Margaret Eggloff. It was built, we believe, as a direct result of a house that was seen at the New York World's Fair that year. It was designed by architect Earl Richard Cone in 1997. Dale and Susan Armstrong purchased the house, laid down some renovations to it. In June, of course, of 2008, you know, your flood here, the Vail River flooded the house out. And currently, Dale is looking at, the property is owned by the city right now. So it has to be moved off of that site. Two years ago, it had a flood tank. In 2010, the city purchased it and it's been waiting for its new home. Here's a quick slide about, and contrast of these two homes. Again, on the left, this is 1939. At the World's Fair, there was a future town that was presented there, and this was house number 21 that you could tour. As you can see, the house has the garage placed in front of it. As it said, this Will Page 520 East Sheridan, Des Moines, Iowa, I'm the architectural historian working on the team for the city and for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. When I first saw this house in Mason City, I thought I recognized something. And I kept thinking, Chicago, century of progress, 1933. I'm old enough, no I'm not. But there were a number of model homes, but I couldn't find any information about it. And have you ever had the aha moment? My aha moment was 1939 New York World's Fair. And so I did some research, and indeed, there were twenty-one Homes of Tomorrow, or as you say here, Homes of the Future. And here on the left, you will see the motor home of the future. And if you look at that image on the left and the image of the egglock house on the right, you can see the strong influence of the World's Fair on architect Cone. The egglock house takes this one step farther. Not only do they have the garage in the front, but they've used that space to expand the building by having a second floor above the garage. So some people have called, have called this a home or a house with an attached garage. This is a garage with an attached home. And it's interesting to me, we've had a meeting earlier today, more than thirty people came to an informational meeting. One, two owners of the Nelson House here in Mason City who talked about the importance of the automobile for their particular property, and I'm sure you know which building I'm talking about. Here, twenty years after the construction of that house, we have another building in Mason City directly linked with the automobile. And so I see, as an architectural historian, this connection of the automobile, its importance for Mason City, and it's an expression here in this, in this building considering today. Some very unique features about this house. Some other features that are unique to it here, you can see we've kind of compiled a list of the details that are attached in the home. Dr. Eggloff, he loved sailing, and his brother-in-law, actually, who designed the house, had sailed quite a bit together. So it brought some of those details directly into their home. You can see on the far left at the bottom there, there's a compass, the detail that is cut into with the different colors into the linoleum floor that's in the red room over the garage. You can also see on the far right, in that same room, there is a fireplace that was designed to represent a ship's boiler, all made out of steel plate and steel bands riveted together. There are also the round portal windows that you can see, and a couple of those photos there. And the other unique feature there is the balcony rails that typically would be seen on a ship's deck. Other unique features, the swamp cooler, we utilized different techniques to actually cool the house that early on in the 1930s, irrigation systems. Some of the finishes in the house are very neat, grass cloth, and also some of the wood veneer, wainscote differently done. Most unique, I think, is the Sheffield tile system that first started here in Mason City as a structural system for the first floor. And it's a system actually where you, if you're not familiar with it, they can take the tile and they grow the course of the tile together with a reinforcing bar, create basically a structural joist out of it to support leather tile that they then create for on top of. So very unique system and unique to your area. The historical significance, I wanted to put this in here to make you aware of what makes this house unique to your city and even to the Midwest for that matter. It's the international modern style, streamlined modern, and it's a style that was first influenced by Frank Wright Wright and some of the architects overseas. As it came to the Midwest and gained exposure, you started seeing some examples pop up. There are very few of these examples, first off, in your community, second of all, north, central Iowa, or even the entire state and the Midwest. They're very unique homes in their style, and I just wanted to point that out. And they have their contemporary, they were the beginning of a movement in contemporary look. So we'll show some of those features here. Another thing that's key to the, to the home is that it talks about your architectural heritage here, about your community, about what, how your community was developing. It adds, it adds diversity to your historic homes as well. So, and there's a number of things, but first off and foremost, our team was brought up here to actually evaluate the home and determine whether it can be moved. We've gone through that process and gained the determinations of two different professional building movers that it can be moved. Here we're showing the actual proposed cut line that you can see in the bottom right diagram. We would have to take the building apart in two different sections and move it, just because of its size. Costs on that range, we're estimating between $200,000 and $250,000, depending on the distance and because it has to go in two sections. And then, of course, also that factor is rolling into it too, and some of the physical barriers such as trees, power lines, and bridges on the road map that gets it to its eventual destination. Our team is also looking at a number of different sites right in Mason City. Right now, we've got about eight sites, and we're appealing to you for additional sites that may be viable options, and also in terms of viable adaptive uses for the project. Here's a quick look at some floor plans as they currently exist. It's a four-bedroom home upstairs. Those could also, I would like to, just to get you thinking, those bedrooms could also serve as offices if the downstairs were redesigned as some meeting rooms and a conference room. So there's great potential, whether it goes as a private residence or, here's just a list of some ideas for different possible adaptive uses, as offices, nonprofit organization headquarters, business suites, commercial, commercial use with an automobile connection because of the uniqueness of the home, that could be automobile or an nautical connection. It could become a bed and breakfast or even a second vacation home. Here's some of the things that would be required to keep the project moving forward and saving the building, relocating it. First off, we would need an appropriate developer or team or interested party to acquire the house, and then look at the costs of moving it. It needs to go from its current site onto the new foundation. At that new foundation, it needs the site utilities to connect the house, new HVAC system included. There would need to be some preservation to the inside. Water rose into the house, first two feet on the first floor were damaged. They've been stripped out, so there will be some replacement materials there. But on the positive side, to save the house, there are a lot of grants and tax credit opportunities in different, there are state historic preservation tax credits that are available, and then if it goes to a non-residential use or commercial use, would be eligible for up to twenty percent on a federal rehabilitation tax credit. And then my understanding also is that the city would provide a 100% fire year tax maintenance. So there's some really good incentives there, and that's kind of where our team is right now. Our, our next step is to compose after we get input from the community on all the site options and adaptive use options, then put that into a report and deliver that to you. So I guess if you have any questions.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. You bet. All right. Well, now it's time for public input. The city, mayor, and council, welcome you. Comments on agenda items only during the public forum. Ask your name, address, and the agenda item or number, topic that you're addressing, and you'll be limited to five minutes, and the clock is right up there in front of you. All right. Saying done, we'll close public forum, and we'll consent agenda, I'll read the consent agenda, and then we'll get, entertain a motion if there's anybody to like to pull anything. Number seven, minutes, regular meeting minutes of November 1st, special minutes of November 3rd, work session minutes of October 25th, 2011. Eight claims dated the 3rd and 10th through 2011. Nine for events. Ten, administrative recommending approval post restricted parking signs along the west side of South Garfield Avenue in intersection with Highway 122, south distance of 190 feet. Eleven, administrative recommending approval resolution accepting work in order payment for construction of the South Monroe Avenue Street in intersection of Project, the city of Mason City, Iowa. Twelve, administrative recommending approval resolution accepting work in order payment for construction of the South Delaware Avenue Bridge over Willow Creek replacement project. Thirteen, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing approval of Amendment One with WHKS accompanying for additional services related to the CSVG sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Fourteen, administrative recommending approval resolution approving annual TIP certifications for certain companies having development grants with the city and authorizing semi-annual TIP rebates or economic development grants in conjunction with improvements in property job creation in the city of Mason City. Excuse me. Number fifteen, administrative recommending approval of 2008 resolution accepting warranty deed from 12th or Second Street in order these. Council, do you have any items you'd like to pull? All right. Well, saying done, I've entertained a motion on to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Check it. All right. The call roll.
Marsters.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Picky.
Yes.
All right. Number sixteen, we're going to, this is an item on contract negotiations before, and before we get a, you know, motion on the table, we're going to let Mr. Trout open this up because there's a few different choices, and then based on our discussion, or excuse me, we'll let someone make a motion, and then we'll have a discussion about, hopefully we'll have recommendations, yes, or we can talk. Mr. Trout, it's our city.
Thank you, Your Honor. With this item, the city council, two years ago, when we negotiated, hired a professional negotiator to go through the process with us and assist us in, in working out all three negotiated contracts with firefighters, Ask Me, and Teamsters. And so with that process we went through, found it to be very beneficial to us. But I wanted to make sure you're aware of the fact that in the past, city staff had conducted the negotiations and so provided me with the options of going in that direction again if desired, or looking at the three options that exist from, that were proposed to us from Mr. Galway. Mike Galway provided this service for us two years ago. There are three options, the first one being hourly fee agreement, which would basically mean anything related to negotiations that we would do, we'd be charged $195 per hour. The second proposal, the number two, is $6,750 per contract to basically cover everything in negotiations from beginning to end. That would be in all negotiation sessions, if it goes to mediation, or if it goes to interest arbitration, and all of this time is just covered by the one flat fee, given the hours that exist that we put in with each of these contracts. If it goes to the end, he will probably spend more time than he, than we would otherwise pay him. If we end up in the other sessions, it works out about right. And I'd say there's a lot of consultation that we do in between, besides just the actual days when we talk, negotiate, when we negotiate with the other firms. And those negotiation sessions are anywhere from, you know, three to four hours, depending on what's being discussed. Proposal three is a comprehensive flat fee agreement, which provides $3,000 per month to provide services for negotiations, and also a whole list of other services related to discussions about grievances, administrative hearings, any type of forgivable practice complaint, anything and all related to consultation services that a human resources person would, that we would need for that information. That's a quick summary. My recommendation is we do proposal number two, which is the same, what was agreed to two years ago with Mr. Galway. And my recommendation is based on the fact that we're in the process of getting ready to start looking for a new HR director. That process should start this weekend with an advertisement, and I expect to have someone on in January. I may need to use Mr. Galway for some of those consultation services, but based on the two prices, we would use Mr. Galway for 81 hours before we would get to the next level. And so I think with a new person coming on board, I expect to hire a high-quality person. That's what I'm going to get, and so that person will be able to provide us that information that we otherwise would need to go with Mr. Galway for. And so I think that our best deal here in this particular case is to go with him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trout. So that would be resolution of work contract dollars between PC and Des Moines, Iowa, professional services related labor relations negotiation. Proposal two, um, proposal two is $6,750 per contract, flat fee agreement for negotiation services limited to $20,250 plus, plus expenses that go back outside of negotiations would be $195 per hour. Do we have a motion in a second?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion, Mr. Tarquess?
None at this point.
All right. Mr. Nelson?
No.
Is there anybody else? Mr. Marsters?
I just have a question. Mr. Trout?
Yes.
Do you know what our legal fees were in last year's contract payment?
In last year's? I believe his fee was lower. It was, I think he had no experience working with us. I want to say it was in the $3,500. I don't remember specifically, but it was last, last time than this one has.
Would it be lower than proposal C?
Right.
That's what I was looking for.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Anybody else? All right. Well, saying done, we've got a motion in a second on the table. Proposal number two. Call roll.
Tarquess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Picky.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Marsters.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Council. Just a quick note to everybody at home, and I hope Mr. Uchesci can put this up on the screen again. Blue Zone Projects, get your kids, get them out, empty your addresses. Let's go to bluzonproject.com or text BTP to 772937 and enter Mason City and 501. We need to get this done. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We're adjourned. Have a good evening.